So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Excuse me, Mike? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have no audio.
Can you hear us now?
I do now.
You okay, Mike?
Yeah, I didn't have it recorded. I had it muted, so anything you said in the beginning was...
Okay.
Do you have the times? We called it at 7:00, meeting to order, had the legions and saw an approval agenda, Allison.
Mary Lee made the motion and Bob seconded it, or the other way around?
The other way around.
Bob made the motion and Mary Lee seconded it.
All set, Allison?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I believe we voted on that, correct?
We did not.
We did not. We shall vote no. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of the minutes 12/21/24. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of December 21. No, that's today. Yes, December 21, 2023.
And a second? Corrections, additions? Joe?
Sorry, I didn't hear who seconded.
I did.
Joe Mark?
Thank you.
On page two, in paragraph that starts allocation of returnable deposit, bottle and can revenue in the folded and underlined area, the fourth line says CVS, comma, and maintenance and facilities used by the recreation department after and, I think I had suggested improvement of, so that it should read maintenance and improvement of facilities used by the recreation department. And then, on the third page, under select board comments and their concerns, it starts by saying J. Mark thanked R. Spalding for sending past dedications report of the board. I'm not sure that's exactly what happened at that point. I think Bob may have thanked Mike for sending those, but I'm not sure. Does anyone have a clearer recollection?
I was, I read this and wondered, I think you're probably more accurate than the minutes. But we'd have to look at the Zoom recording.
Do you have any record, recollection of what happened?
I didn't send, the way I read it, Joe, is it, it says that I sent you the dedications. I didn't send you the dedications. I just sent you what I was looking for, for your report.
Right, you mentioned that the report should address the budget.
Yeah.
So...
I don't know where this dedication thing came from.
So I guess one way to bring this a little closer to what happened that night would be to say J. Mark thanked R. Spalding for sending his suggestion on the content of the select board report in the town report.
Perfect. Okay.
That's it for me.
Nick? I'm good. Bob? I'm good. Mary Lee?
I think on page two, very bottom line, I think after legislation, there should be a period and start a new sentence, the board feels. Take which out.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All those in favor of the motion with corrections indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
I recuse myself since I wasn't at the meeting. Citizens' comments or concerns, any items not on the agenda? Are there any citizens who wish to address the board? Item not on the agenda. Sounds good.
I don't see anybody on Zoom.
Anybody on Zoom?
I don't see any.
No one there?
No hands up.
Nothing, Mike?
Nobody's responding now.
Okay, all right. Now, we'll move on to Lake Bomazine Environmental Alliance. Rob Steele?
Where's that?
Chairman? Where are we going to recognize two longstanding...
Oh, I'm sorry. Stay right there, Rob, you're okay. Okay. Mike, want to recognize two longstanding staff members who are retiring?
Sure, they're not here, but, so the public knows Nancy Mark, our treasurer, retired as of the 4th of January.
No.
Nancy Trudeau.
That's what I said, Nancy Mark. Joe didn't, did she know that?
I've been encouraging her to retire.
Well, sir, I stand corrected. Nancy Trudeau retired, and also our 28-year veteran Melanie Combs is retiring the 12th. So we have a new town accountant, his name is Joe Carmel. He's been working with Melanie for the past month. So we have two longstanding employees that have left us, and we've got some new people coming in, so if you're in the town office, stop in inside. And we do have a party, oh, I can't say that. Strike that, strike that in the record.
Any other comments on the board? Joe?
Well, I just, I don't have a great deal of personal familiarity with Nancy's and Melanie's contributions, but I know that any institution that loses employees that have served for that long loses a lot.
Yes.
We have to wish them well and thank them for the service.
Okay. General. That is the consensus, I believe, of the board.
Absolutely.
Thank them for the service. Okay, thank you. Now, Rob.
All right. Rob Steele?
Sorry to hold you up, Rob.
You're not holding me up. First, I just want to thank Mike for getting me on the agenda, and I want to thank all of you for taking the time to listen. And I also wanted to thank you for your support over the past few years in trying to keep Bomazine herbicide free. I want to introduce ourselves. You've all known that we've had kind of a loose group of people that have gathered together to help protect Lake Bomazine over the past two years. We've officially decided to become incorporated so that we have a little bit better stance with different agencies. So we are now currently the Lake Bomazine Environmental Alliance. We are an incorporated public benefit nonprofit organization. We're currently working on getting our 501(c)(3) status. Our mission is to protect and preserve Lake Bomazine's natural ecosystems and water quality through scientific research, lake monitoring, advocacy, public networking and education. We have a 13-member board made up of the people that you see beside, behind me here. Well, except for my mom and the other gentleman. There's a few other people that are absent tonight, but I just wanted to let you know that we're out there, and if the town has anything that they need any help with when it comes to the lake, or any questions or anything like that, that you might need answers, you're more than welcome to ask us, and we will see what we can do for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Rob?
What's that?
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Rob?
Does that handout you have include contact information?
It does, yeah.
Okay, then I'm good. Thank you.
And I think all of you know where I'm at anyways.
Appreciate your efforts, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Rob, you mind if I post this with the minutes on the website?
Yeah, you have to, don't you?
Yeah, this is, this is the final version.
Yeah, fine. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Moving on, Delaware and Hudson Rail Trail Council. Nick Stark, Rutland Regional Planning Commission?
Hi, all. Yeah, I'm Nick Stark. I'm the GIS planner at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. I'm a resident of Pulteney as well, and an everyday user of the DNH trail. I'm not sure, I did send over some documents, hopefully you all got a copy of them. There are a, you know, a group of documents, we've put together a working group of interested folks from all the municipalities that touch the DNH rail trail, who had an interest in working together and sort of streamlining efforts to maintain the rail trail. The council itself was an initiative that was put forth by V. Trans, who is the current owner. They've, they've asked regional planning commissions in every part of the state that has a rail trail to begin working on putting together councils to help oversee the maintenance and, you know, hopefully include, you know, some efficiencies in adding new amenities to the rail trails, much as we've seen at the work being done at the Loyal Valley rail trail. So maybe before I go any further, I know that's a lot of info, I just wanted to see, are there any questions? Does that all make sense?
There may have questions, but finish, you know, keep going.
Okay, great.
Because you can answer them before, you know.
Yeah. So we're, as I mentioned, we've been working as an informal working group for the last couple of months, putting together these documents and sort of figuring out where the corners of what the council, how it will behave, and, you know, what is the purview of the topics that we're looking to work on together. And we settled on a structure by which we're asking each of the municipalities through which the DNH passes to elect a representative on behalf of their town to act as a board member on the council, and then, you know, ideally come back and report to you guys about, hey, here's what's going on, here's what, you know, the state's planning, here's some efforts that are happening further down the trail that we might want to emulate, here's how other folks are dealing with this kind of problem. So there's, you know, I hate to use the word efficiency again, but there's lots to be learned, I think, by working together as a coalition across the 32-odd miles from, from here in Castleton all the way down to Rupert. So I'm not sure if they're in attendance, but a fellow did raise his hand already, who was interested in representing Castleton. So you do have a willing volunteer, I believe, by the name of Matt Brown or Mark Brown, but I haven't spoken with him, but he did email me the other day, expressing his intent to act as representative, so...
Is that Mac, or is that Mark or Nat?
That's a great question. I'd have to check back through my emails. I know that he is, he has been leading walks on the rail trail in the past couple...
Mark.
Couple of weeks.
More likely Mark. I guess it's Mark, yeah. Sounds like Mark, okay, thank you.
But of course, that's, you know, up to your discretion as to who you'd like to put forth. The other thing that we are asking is, you know, if you're able, if you have enough willing participants to have a backup as well, just in case, you know, someone maybe can't make it for a couple of months, or, you know, falls ill, or something like that, to have someone in the wings who can step in in their, in their place so that we can continue business as usual at these, at these council meetings.
Questions for Nick? Comments?
Where are the council meetings held?
So they're held both at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission office in Rutland. We have pizza, so please do come. The, once they are formalized with representatives, they will be open to the public and, you know, adhere to open meeting law and all that sort of thing. So you can find out all that information on the Rutland RPC website, rutlandrpc.org. And actually, I invite anybody from the public or otherwise. Our next meeting is, yikes, this Wednesday? No, next Wednesday, I believe. And that'll be open to the public, so you can come, talk about issues that you might have with the rail trail, ideas you might have with the rail trail. If you're looking to get involved, you don't have to be a board member to attend the meeting, and we'd love to hear, you know, people's folks. There's a ton of potential. And actually, some of the recent success we've had with the council, even its protoform, is working with the town of Granville to adopt a lot of the signage and amenity guidelines that V. Trans has put forth, so it'll be a cohesive experience across state lines. So we, we do believe that there's a lot of really good stuff coming down the pipeline.
Thank you. Joe?
Just a comment. I guess I would hope that you would be willing to move your meetings around so that they are closer to some of the southern communities that are part of the coalition. And I guess I would be prepared to move that we appoint Mark Brown as our representative to the, is it the commission that we're?
The council.
The council.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
And a second. Any discussion?
I think we need to hear from Mark personally.
I would, I would encourage that as well.
Although if he, if he requests to be appointed, I see no reason not to support that.
I would allow you to, if he interfaces with you and expresses that intent, I believe that's the proper channel through which you should come. And to your point, I would also note, I might not have mentioned it, but they are hybrid meetings, so they both take place at the Regional Planning Commission and online via Microsoft Teams, which is our tool choice. Indeed, yes. And, you know, personally, I'd love to have ones, maybe in the summer months more, but out on the trail itself. I think that'll be pretty fun. Go see the other, the other towns.
So I guess I'm going to withdraw my motion.
I'll send Mark a text tomorrow. He and I communicate occasionally.
You want to withdraw your session? You'll try, okay.
Oh, he's, okay.
Okay.
I do have a question.
You have a question?
Yes. At one time, south of Pulteney, the rail trail was closed. Is that now open?
It is unfortunately not. It is something that there is renewed interest in the town of Granville, so that's actually at the border of Pulteney and Granville. There are two property owners in Granville that are, you know, keeping the trail from, from continuing through. Unfortunately, there was even a grant that had been won to complete the trail, and that's when all this dust got kicked up. But Granville actually just went through a really great process from the EPA workshop from the EPA that Pulteney partook in a couple of years ago called REC, which is recreational economies for rural communities. And out of that, there's a renewed interest in making sure that that missing link of the trail is completed. So for, you know, me personally, as a user of the trail, I'd love to see it connected, and it's a big reason that I raised my hand to start the council, because I do believe as a unified body, we might hold a bit more sway in getting the Secretary of State of New York to act accordingly, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else for Nick?
Yeah, a couple of quick, quick questions. The rail south of Granville, it crosses the border back into West Paulton and goes down to Rupert, and then ultimately went to Salem, New York. How much of that south of Granville is currently open and being used?
It does peter out in Rupert. I've ridden it down there. I've actually ridden it to Salem, but I ended up on the road for a little bit. And as a historical point, I've been learning a lot about it. It actually used to go to Eagle Bridge, which I'd never heard of before. So, but there is some interest in the town of Salem of pushing it forward. I don't think anything official quite yet, but both the snowmobile club, yeah, pardon me, snowmobile club down there and some, you know, avid pedestrians and cyclists have, actually, we've had some folks attend the council meeting, expressing interest in moving that effort forward.
What entity in Granville is pursuing anything on your behalf, or?
In Granville, the town clerk and the village clerk both attend our meetings, and they most recently won a, I'm going to butcher their name, but they won a grant, and they're adding some new amenities to their trail, which is where the whole unification with the design guidelines that we have on the Vermont side came into play.
Because I would suggest if you're, if you could enlist the help of their Chamber of Commerce, and they have a, I don't know what you call it, a village booster organization that are all about promoting Granville and getting, making the town more attractive, so I don't know what, if any, help you could get through them, but certainly more enthusiasm is always better.
Indeed, yeah.
So I would recommend that whoever is appropriate, reach out to Granville and see if they can spread their umbrella a little bigger.
Okay, I'll, I'll try and get in touch with the Chamber of Commerce. We did reserve a seat for each municipality to, for a chamber of commerce to represent each municipality, so, you know, they've got a seat waiting for them, so I'll make sure that they, that they, they know that.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Nick, we appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Moving on, recreation update. John? John Alexander?
Yes, so we've submitted a monthly report, and to summarize, the numbers reflect a slight decrease in participation numbers month over month. I think it's pretty evident that that's a result of the lack of rec director for a month. The yoga classes, I contacted the yoga instructor, she's taken on a new job, so that won't be starting up until possibly April or May. The recreational basketball, we have pretty much full enrollment for that. We have opened, I'm trying to open up the instructional K through 2 participation backup. I guess it's been a practice to close the registration at the, at a certain point for the, what I would consider the competitive grades, so grades three and four, because the coaches don't want too many participants just to be able to equalize playing time and whatnot. So they had been closing participation. However, in conversation with the K through 2 instructor, she indicated that they have no problem with whoever signed up. So we have three more parents that we need to sign up, collect monies from, get waivers from, make sure the paperwork's all situated with that. We are in the works right now of restarting the walking program through, it was previously done through the Senior Center and the Arthritis Association, and they actually had a, an educational piece to it. I think that it would be something that I'd be willing to ensure happens in the mornings from 9:00 to noon. I'm still working on setting my daily work hours, so that gives me something. We've had three different questions from participants over the last week as to when that would be starting back up, so we're going to set it at the old hours of 9:00. It was from 9:00 to 10:00, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, so we're going to open that up till 9:00 till noon. It makes no difference to me how long the hours are, as long as it doesn't conflict with, you know, an organized basketball game or something like that in the gymnasium, because that's the only thing that it really interferes with, it just goes around the perimeter of the gym and through the hallways. So the only thing it would interfere with would be an organized basketball game for safety purposes. Mary McIntyre has no problem with them walking while they're playing pickleball. So we did have some discussion in the rec commission meeting as to whether or not we would make that a fee-based activity. It wasn't a fee-based activity in the past, I'm learning, I learned that today, so I'm not sure how much interest there is amongst that crowd to make it a fee-based, but what we talked about would be beginning with an optional, whether or not you wanted to pay through a donation factor. That would allow me to be able to gradually make it a fee-based, because I think it's going to be the same crowd that comes to the walking. Mike has also tasked me with contacting the area towns that have active recreation programs, Pittsford, Brandon, Rutland Town, Rutland City, to be able to get a better handle on what the program, how the programs have, you know, been created in those towns, and how long it was before they actually saw significant revenue, and whether or not they are maybe cost neutral or actually making money for the towns. It sounds like, you know, obviously, we want this to be able to be something that would be at a minimum breaking even, and I'm not sure how long we can really anticipate it's going to take us for to be, to be able to do that, because we would, I would like to increase activities in the school and at Crystal Beach to be able to maximum, max out our potential, but that remains to be seen whether or not we're, we're able to do that. So just to be able to give the board a one, three and five-year plan on when they can expect to see a reasonable increase in revenues, and, you know, I understand that the question of the keeping or divesting of the schools remains at issue, and if it was something, if, you know, if it was the track that a similar type town such as Pittsford or Brandon took where, you know, they fought to secure a building and then were able to make that building into a success story recreation-wise, then obviously it wouldn't be, that would be contradictory to divesting of the school at this point. I understand, just tonight, I was in conversation with somebody that's assisting with Freihaven Rec. Freihaven Rec is now looking to invest in a full-time recreation director, so that would be, you know, another opportunity for partnering with Freihaven on a lot of different recreation opportunities, which should open up some opportunity for us as well. But that's about what I have.
Thank you, John. Questions for John? Joe?
John, just a question about the pickleball numbers. It looks like maybe you've changed the way you're reporting those, seeing what was happening prior to October, what we're reporting now. Is that an apples and apples comparison, or?
It, it's an, it's an apples-to-apples comparison. It is a three-session per week, 13 people. It was, the, the month of December apparently is a, is not the biggest month for participation just because of vacations and whatnot. Those numbers were, there has been some discrepancies in completing the paperwork and the, taking in the funds, and that's where you get your numbers from. We do have some work in regards to the individuals that have been covering that, absent the rec director, and bringing that back fully under my responsibility to be able to remit, take payment remits, which would generate into the numbers. Those numbers could be slightly off for the month. I mean, they're, when they're saying participants, those are the same people each, each time. Those, I noticed in the months previous, they're counting the same person every time they show up, so not sure, I didn't really fully understand how they were arriving at those, those numbers in the past, but...
Well, I guess I would just urge that we use the same way of reporting participation from year to year so that we can see, you know, stability of growth or declines, and I don't particularly care how you want to do it, whether you want to talk about it on an average per session or a total across the month.
Right.
But it looks like we were doing...
I don't necessarily think the average per session has dropped off very much. It's been a consistent group of 13 to 16 participants per week, and I'm not sure how those numbers were arrived at in the past. So I can, I can reach out to, I can reach out to see how those numbers were arrived at in the past, but it didn't, didn't make sense to me at the time.
Okay. Nick?
I'm good.
You good? Folks, I'm good. Thank you, John. Revised FYE 2025 budget for select board approval. Mr. Town Manager? Mr. Town Manager.
In front of you, Mr. Chairman, each board member should have a copy of the new budget worksheet. And just want to point out an error, it's corrected on our server. But on page one, upper left-hand corner in red, it says 1-8-2023. Obviously, that should be 1-8-2024. But the change that is driving this is in auditing. There was a $3,000 mistake. It wasn't reading from the, the professional services cell. So down in the total auditing, oh, say, back in professional services, it said 18,000. And now on page number four, right almost in the middle of the page, in the gray column. So under professional services for auditing, it, it read, the one that you approved or endorsed read 18,000, but under the total auditing, it said 15,000. And that's where the cells are, that reads that cell for to get the total. So there was a $3,000 error there. So you'll notice now on the, on page number 19, excuse me. On page number 19, the darker green line that runs all the way across the page, it says total expenditures. That total is now $3,000 greater. So I, in that hand that I gave you, that has the, looks like this. This is items for discussion with the select board. I put a copy of what the mistake was, the mo, when you made the motion. I also put a copy of the minutes directly behind that. So if you are, if you do endorse this, you have a copy of the minute showing the date and what you, the board had made a motion on. And you're just now making a different motion for the extra $3,000.
Should we, Mr. Parliamentarian, should we rescind the motion that was made at the last meeting to approve the budget without the additional 3,000?
I think rescinding or amending are both options in this situation.
Okay. Someone care to make a motion?
Well, if I made the earlier motion, I'll make this one as well. I would move that we amend the total budget expenditure amount the board approved on the December 21st, 2023 meeting, which had previously allocated total expenditures of $4,235,731 and change that amount to $4,238,731.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion. Seeing no, no discussion. I don't plan to vote for this. It's too much for our taxpayers. I think Mike is well aware of this, we've talked about it. But I'm sure the motion will pass, so I'll be once again in the majority of one, probably. Okay. Okay. No other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye opposed. Moving on.
Thank you.
Sorry, who said they opposed?
What's that, Allison?
Who said they opposed?
She's asking for your name, Jim. She wants to know who you are, Jim.
I did, Allison.
Okay. Wasn't sure.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, somebody had a hand up. It was Liz Byrd. She's had it up for quite a while. I'm not sure if she's still on, but you wish to let her address you? I'm not sure if she's still on or not. I don't see her, so maybe not.
Don't see her?
She had her hand up for quite a while, but I didn't. So she's not there anymore.
Not there. Okay. All right, we'll move on, Mike, to quote to repair the 2013 tandem dump truck.
Thank you. This, this is not new. This is something the board has already seen before. It's, the truck is no longer Earl's, it's back in, in Castleton. And I, last time I spoke to the board, I said I have to think about how to, how we would fund this since the highway maintenance budget is already pretty much spent. And we're six months into the fiscal year. And what I, what I'm going to propose is that the board approves this to come out of the normal operating budget for the highway department. And I'm going to work with Jeff to cut back on the summer maintenance because we have, we have three grants that we have to work on. So we're not going to get to a lot of this work that, that, that summer maintenance budget normally covers, like culverts and gravel and stuff like that. That stuff's going to be covered under the grant. So I'm confident that we can, we'll be able to use the money that's in the budget and the grant money will pay for the, the project. Because talking with Jeff earlier, there's some pretty substantial projects that, it's going to take them all summer just to get that done. And then you start throwing in roadside mowing and all that. It's, there's not going to be a lot of, like, white space. So that's how I propose that the, that the board authorize this, that it just comes, you authorize the $16,505.10 to come out of the highway budget so that this truck can be repaired and back on the road, because we're down that tandem right now.
It's not operational?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move that we authorize the town manager to contract with Earl Truck Repair, Inc. for repairs to the 2013 International WorkStar 7600, not to exceed $16,505.10.
You second?
Second.
Add a second. Discussion?
Yep.
Bob?
Why did we single out this truck repair business here, Mike? Why, why aren't we getting the three quotes that we're supposed to be getting?
Well, we had, we had two. One of them, yeah, one of them, that was from Todd Batwell. And he, he told us he wasn't going to do the work. So we're back down to, this was brought over there, sat there for quite a while. So they're, they're less than, no, they weren't less than. Central Vermont Truck Services could not get it in as quick as Earl's could. So that's, it's more of a timing issue at this point. And what we've seen between the two companies, the two businesses, they're not, there's not a whole lot of difference between what they charge. But to get this, this is, this has gone on now for over a month. Actually, I think Todd Batwell had this truck at his place back in the fall. So that's why Earl's, it's, it's to get it in now, that, due to timing of their availability, I guess, to, to do that. The only place we didn't look at was Avalanche Truck Service and Fairhaven. So that, dishonestly, we just didn't even that call them and ask them. Not, not because we were avoiding them, but just.
That's, I just, I would just like to see us keep stuff a little more local. But if you reach out to Todd and you reach out to Central Vermont.
Those are the three, I did reach out to Avalanche, but.
No, okay. Well, maybe the next time, you know. I'd just like to see stuff kept closer to in-town.
Yeah, that's why we try to use Batwell Logging, because they are local. But there was a decision to not do it. So we had, and that's when the fuel tank was leaking and they, and he asked us to move it back to the highway garage, so we did.
Is that, that's my, was my next question. That's why it came back from Earl's, back to our garage because the fuel tank was leaking?
That was from Todd's. We got it over to Earl's and the decision hadn't been made by the select board yet at that time. So they needed room in their facility over there and they asked us if we'd come pick it up.
Okay, so it is drivable?
If Jeff's on there, I didn't personally go pick it up, I think they did drive it.
Okay, all right.
It breaks, well, part, part of the issue was the, was brakes. So, but it is back at our facility now. And to, the quickest way to do this, to get it fixed right now is Earl's.
This is a truck that we need, like, now?
This is our, one of our tandems that runs on the longer routes and carries the materials out to Byrd's Eye and West Castle and all that.
But this is also the truck that we're talking about trading too, right? But that won't be for at least another year, right?
According to the manufacturers, which we'll get into in a minute, according to the manufacturers, it could take up to a year to get something new.
Okay, so we've got to fix this.
Yeah, it's a, it's a prime mover for us and.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike?
Just one, quick one. How long, if we pull the trigger on this tonight, how long will it be before you have the truck operational?
Best guess? I, I don't even want to try and listen. If Jeff's on, if you don't mind, if Jeff, you know that answer of how long it'd take Earl's? I don't have that in front of me, so the emails.
No, we do not know.
When you do know, let, let me know, please. I'm just curious. Are we talking a month or two months or two weeks?
Yeah, early, when we first started talking with Central Vermont and Todd and stuff like that, the truck was there because they could take it at the time. Now we're back to that one quote and.
All I'm asking for, Jeff, is your best guess. It's not, you know, if you know what I mean.
I'll get a hold of Earl's tomorrow and get right back to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Mary Lee or Bob's also. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? No one's opposed. Okay. Next one, replacement of the 2013 tandem dump truck. This is not the same one, right, Mike?
Yes, this is.
The same, this the same truck?
This is the same truck. This is something that Jeff and, well, primarily Jeff has been working on. Evan had some, something to do with it too. But so before you is a, is a couple of different quotes in there to replace that 2013 International, knowing that it's going to take approximately a year or so to receive it. What you may not know, and I'm, I'm going to check to make sure it was in this. I, I contacted the bank today and discussed.
You're looking for this?
I am. I have it. In, in front of you, you should have a sheet that looks like that. It says tandem dump truck at the top of it. So talking with TD Bank or M&amp;T Bank today, that's the ones that we deal with that do loans like this. Some history is the vehicle, the 2019, our newer tandem, the last payment was made in July of this year. So that, that payment that we, we, we were, over the time, we've been figuring in two payments per year that we could afford. One right now is being, is being paid on the loader. And we're, then we've got possibly a new one with this new, new replacement or replacement of this 2013. So I talked to the bank and said, hey, what can you guys, you do, what's your terms? What's your interest rates? And this isn't the contract, but this is what they sent back to me that would lead to a contract. And they gave us two different options. One was a seven-year term with a, and they call it a lease. And if, in the back of the packet I gave you, they have an explanation. It's green sheet right here. It talks about what the lease means. And basically, it says, lease purchase agreement avoids classification as a debt obligation and therefore does not affect constitutional debt limits. I, I didn't really care about that so much, but that's what they were pushing. But, so they're calling it a lease. To purchase this vehicle, you see, I wrote on there what the lease payment would be for the seven-year and what the lease payment would be for a five-year. I circled the difference on the second page of what the, what we'd pay in interest over one term over seven years versus five years. But this is what we can afford with our current budget. That's how we budgeted and purchased the vehicles in the past was, basically, we had two $40,000 payments, one we had $80,000 in there. I asked to have that raised to $100,000, which the board has agreed to do that in that budget. So now we can afford this payment. And if we go to seven years, God, I'm really going to get into, into some stuff that bleeds over into the vehicle replacement plan, which I've been plowing through and pulling my hair out over for approximately three weeks. But this does not impact that, that, that replacement plan. Because this is one of those two that we've been, we've been counting on, that, that $40,000 to $50,000 payment. And this just happens to be the next truck in line. And the very first page of the replacement says, in 2018, the, the board had approved that capital improvement plan and this thing should already been replaced. But due to other requirements, we pushed it out further. And now we're at that point of decision to order it or not order it. And you notice that we're starting to put more money into these older vehicles. And in this proposal, and I'll let Jeff talk to this, they're, they're offering a seven-year warranty on this and it shows on the, the sheets right here. They're called the quotes. A seven-year warranty. Jeff's been really diligent about talking with these dealers and, and the longevity of these trucks. And what they, what we've been told is, if you buy a truck and you put a seven-year warranty on it, if you trade it into seven years, you're going to get a minimum of $110,000 to $120,000 in trade-in value. And because it's still at the end of that warranty period, which means that the subsequent amount that we have to board to replace that truck will be lower minus inflation and stuff. And my, my schedule addresses all that. But for this truck right here, I'll let Jeff talk about the particulars, but I just wanted to give you the history behind it and show you that the bank has, what the bank has provided to me as of this afternoon. We can afford it, it's in our budget. And it's about somewhere close to a year away if we ordered it today. One, one thing that the bank did say is that they can put stuff in escrow and we can pay for the cabin chassis, because this is how this is structured. Is we purchase the cabin chassis, then it goes to Viking Sive for the dump box or the box itself and the sand or plow package. So we could pay for the truck upfront if we were to get, if you approve this and we get the loan. And then we're not paying for something we don't have yet either. We'll have the truck. We won't be able to use it for anything besides bringing it to Viking Sive to put a package on it. But they said they could put money in escrow and it'll sit there until we need it. So unless you have any questions, I mean, I, I do want to let Jeff speak to this or answer your questions at least as to his recommendation and why he got to that point. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, letting Jeff address the board.
Sure.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I guess first off, is there, are there any questions about the replacement of the tandem?
Questions for Jeff?
You mean, you mean it's questions as far as whether or not it's necessary? Is that your?
Yes, yes. If there's a, why it needs to be replaced, if it needs to be replaced, anything in that manner.
I think, I can't speak for the whole board, but I'm okay with the concept of replacing it. I just want to know what our two, you have two courses of action listed here and I want to know what your preference is and why.
Okay. Oh, well, we, the two trucks, we have the international. Our whole fleet is, is totally international right now. Talking to the guys that have been there for a while over the years, they've had little, little problems here and there. Not quite the truck that the Western Star or the Freightliner are. So leaning towards the Western Star and the Freightliner, both of which have a higher trade-in value at that point. Talking with Craig Allen, who's, both of these quotes are from, as Mike kind of touched on, it's, it's basically a seven-year window. And when that seven-year comes up, the, the truck starts to depreciate significantly. We have an older truck out in our, our lot right now. It's a single. I'm, I'm sure it's definitely way before my time, as most of them are. But it's a truck just sitting there, trying to sell it to the tandem that's at Earl's right now or that's going to go to Earl's. You know, you start to get nickel and dimed, so to speak, after, they start to get that wear and tear after seven years.
Mr. Chairman, what, Jeff, what's the? Mr. Chairman, what, Jeff, what's the value of that truck right now if we traded it or tried to sell it?
Which one?
The tandem, the thirteen.
Not, not $100,000. I, I, I don't know. I'd have to talk to Craig to see uh, if, if he'd even be interested in it. All he did was give me the window for about that seven years, tandem. Uh, you, you see the prices for the Western Star, Freightliner. The, the Western Star is uh, approximately $120,000 and that is today's value. So, you know, that'll, that'll fluctuate, you know, you can buy the truck in a year, seven years from there. Um, the Freightliner is about $110,000 trade-in. So th- th- these trucks are approximately 10 to 12-year trucks if you're really pushing them. That's the industry standard. So you kind of pick your poison. It's uh, fingers crossed and hope that it, it keeps plugging away, keeps plugging away or, you know, just uh, starts to nickel and diming.
Other questions for Jeff?
I'm just wondering where, where are the other two bids? We, we got to have three bids on these trucks. We don't just go to one dealership. I'm not going to be in favor of even voting on this. Have you, have you gone to the other dealerships out there, Jeff?
No. There's uh, there's International dealer out of uh.
We're not talking about International. We're talking about this Western Star and Freightliner.
Yeah, and I, I, I'll look around. There, it's like Viking Sives. It's, there's, there's them and then there's pretty much them. There, it's not a, a giant market right now. That's, that's why you buy a truck, you're easy here to get Viking Sives to outfit your truck for you.
I'm not talking about the accessories. I'm talking about the truck itself.
Bob, you, you have a, um, you, you must know, like, a, a dealer. So are you, do you have anything that you want to recommend?
I probably shouldn't, but our, our Charlie Boys is a much bigger dealership than this, these particular folks here. I'm not saying that's going to guarantee us a cheaper price, but they, they sell a whole lot more trucks than this outfit does here. And there's Freightliner and Western Star in, out in New Hampshire too. I just, I just want to see a comparison from the different dealerships, that's all. We're talking this kind of money. This is big money. That's all.
Mary Lee, any questions for Jeff?
So, so it sounds like we need to get something from different dealers, um, to, as a comparison to those model trucks and stuff that are on here.
Makes sense.
So, um, let me ask, this is a question either for Mike or for Jeff. Both these quotes here, I see one for a Freightliner and one for a Western Star, and they're both from the same vendor? Is that correct?
Yes, I, I, I'm a little late to the party on this one, so I'll, I'll jump in and get involved. I, I've been focusing on the replacement of the F-450, um, which is, that's a, that's another conversation at some point. So I can grab this by the horns tomorrow and, and get after it.
I'm not going to speak for Bob, but I think I'm on the same page he is. We'd like to see at least one or two more possible vendors, and they could be for the same truck. And uh, and/or look at some other um, manufacturers. I, I know the last time we went to buy a truck, one of the things that our foreman or our town mechanic had looked at was a Kenworth. And the decision was made to not go with Kenworth for a variety of reasons. So I just, I'd like to see more options. I think I'm on the same page as Bob here.
Nope, I totally understand what you said. It's, I'm kind of jumping the, that, that tandem replacement a little late. So, uh, let me, let me get after it and I'll give you some results.
Yeah, if you can get after it, and I'd be prepared to make a decision at the next select board meeting if we had a few more options to choose from here.
Yep, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
And just, uh, Mark, yeah, that's going to, that's important for me with a bank too, because you're going to want to see a contract or amortization schedule. And if the prices start fluctuating, like the one you have now is for $271,000. So I need to, I need to be able to come back to the board with um, what the cost would be for that, for each one of them. So you know what that is.
Okay, should I take care of that one?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question for the general manager. Are you saying that our budget can handle either the five-year or the seven-year repayment schedule?
No, I made a note on the, the seven-year we can handle. The five-year puts us outside of what we. I put on the first page I wrote in my right handwriting, it says, we can afford this under the current budget. And that was the seven-year term. I didn't make any notation on the five-year because it's, it's above what we have to spend. We got $50,000 basically to spend. And the 47 under the seven years under that and the 63 is definitely over it.
What's our payment on the loader approximately?
Forty-eight thousand.
Okay. How much longer on that, Mike? Just off the top of your head?
2026.
A couple of years.
We're cruising along with that one.
Perfect.
And then we got another one on the, on the backhoe, that's seven, a little less than $7,000. That one goes out to 2031.
Okay, that's only $7,000?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We didn't finance all of it, that's why.
You couldn't find that out of your back pocket, right?
Yeah. Sure.
Now Jim's piggy bank.
Yeah, I got it. Anything else on this? Okay, want to move on to the next one, Mike? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Rob?
I just got a quick question because I'm curious. So Mike, you said that if we, we bought the truck now, even though, what is it, Viking can't do the body on it, we could take possession and it would be at the town garage? Is that what you're saying? Does the warranty on that start immediately then? And if it's a year to get the Viking body, do we lose that year of warranty? Or does the warranty start when Viking has it fully outfitted and it's ready to go?
When Viking gets it fully outfitted and then we, and that's when we'll make our final payment on the truck as well.
Okay, so the dealership will let it go and not consider it purchased for that year?
Just holding on to it. That's it. Um, okay.
Okay.
The 450.
450.
Again, Jeff, Jeff has done the line, most of this work on this thing. I'm just like the PowerPoint guy on this one, but. So the four, the 2011 4, 450, you, you saw some photos of that. That's the one that's just literally like, hate to use that word, cancerous, like, but it's just falling apart. It's the, it's not in good shape. Not even trying to use it unless we actually have to. This is the truck in that ARPA recommendations that I had asked the select board to consider spending ARPA funds on. To, and again, it plays into that replacement plan, which you don't have. I told you the second meeting in, in January, and I thought I'd be optimistic and have it this time, but I don't. So by next meeting. Um, but this truck is not in our budget. We cannot afford the payment on this one out of what we currently have in the budget. This would either have to be funded through the use of ARPA, um, because we can't afford another payment unless the, until the budget goes up. Which is, we're not talking now until July 1st of 2025, uh, before we can affect that next budget. But the amount that I put on that ARPA spreadsheet was 115, or 115, I think. This, this truck is, exceeds that. So just for discussion sake, if the select board were to fund some of this um, with ARPA, the town currently has $71,000. That's, that's all we have in the highway department's vehicle reserve. So we could use some money from that reserve. I would ask that we didn't use all of it, in case we needed it. But some form of that, uh, to fund this vehicle. And I, and I'm not going to talk to timeframes or anything because Jeff has been dealing with this. But in the packet that I handed out earlier, um, that updated one, on, on where the pictures are of the trucks like this, instead of having to jump back and forth, I put in there what the cabin chassis was, what the dump, the box and the um, uh, plow package was for a total. So you wouldn't have to jump back and forth. Um, so you have that and I defer any of your questions, uh, unless it's financing, to Jeff at this point.
Questions?
Just wondering what, what he's recommending, what he's.
In the new one, Bob, if you go to the very back page of that, um, one, he's, his recommendations in there.
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the last thing should be the recommendation.
Okay. So what's the lead time on this truck?
I defer that to Jeff.
Oh, that's a six months for the truck approximately and a year to be outfitted.
So 18 months?
No, no, no. Six months to get the truck approximately and uh, it can be outfitted next December-ish. But it's about a year total.
Okay. So we could have it in service before the heavy winter hits next year, hopefully.
Hopefully, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I know you'll like this one. Um, this, when you see the replacement plan, there is um, there is a reduction or a reduction in, or reduction in the fleet, so that it's not, doesn't show in the replacement schedule. Because what I'm asking is to remove those vehicles from the replacement schedule out of service. And we start with these newer vehicles and we get the warranties and we're able to stay on a, on a cycle that we're replacing them before they become money pits, basically. So you'll see that, but that's just a, um, just a note I wanted to say is that when you see the, the updated or the replacement schedule, there's vehicles that are coming out here. So you're not, we're not going to have the excess vehicles or whatever anybody wants to call them. They're not going to be in there. That's why I said, Mr. Chairman, you like that one.
Very nice of you to do that, Mike.
The tandem is replacing two single axle trucks, right?
Pretty much. Pretty much.
I just want to make sure that, make sure you understood that.
I got it. I got it, Bob.
At least that's what you said the last time, so.
And now we're talking, you know, Jeff and I were talking last week. We may not be exactly 100% on the same philosophy, but um, we've come to an agreement that um, it's the best thing for the town, uh, this reduction and that we have, we have the capability to move snow and haul dirt, uh, even with reduction in the number of vehicles.
Less trucks, less drivers, right?
We don't have enough people to drive them now.
There you go.
And they sit there most of the summer. Uh, they only get really used during the winter.
Yeah.
And so we've, we've kind of hashed this through. And um, we always have a grader too. We forget about that thing. We've, so. It's not doom and gloom that, you know, people aren't going to wake up in the morning and there's going to be eight feet of snow because of snowplows that come by in two days.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not going to have that kind of effect.
Just one more quick question for Jeff. Jeff, do you, do you know of any other municipality around it has one of these 6500s or has had one of these? Do you know?
No, there's a, Hubbardson has the International, uh, which, that was our first choice. And when I got the quote back, it was significantly more.
Okay.
It's essentially the Chevy 6500. Same motor, same transit, uh, transmission. Uh, it's got a little bit, uh, you know, extras here and there. I don't know, it's $18,000 uh, more. Um, so that, that was uh, you know, kind of the case. I believe B-Trans has a Dodge 5500, the same as we have. Uh, it's, it's a little smaller. You, you start to get into that 6500 range here. It, it says on there, you're now talking to 23,000 pounds. That does significant 11-foot box. We're able to haul a lot more, move a lot more material.
And, and it doesn't require a CDL, which we struggle to find people to have CDLs to drive.
I was going to say that 23,000 pounds, 23.5 puts you just under, that's gross vehicle weight, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so that just puts you right under the 24, 24,000 pound.
CDL.
Yes, sir.
So which one are you recommending?
Last page, Mr. Chairman, on that. Right, I, it's, it's the Chevy 60.
Lot of pretty pictures here.
Chevy 6500.
Which one?
Chevy 6500.
Chevrolet.
Chevy?
Yes.
Well, is that an estimated price of 163,723 or is that a firm price?
That's a firm price from Cody Chevrolet and Vikings Sives.
Which should have been part of your packet. I gave, I handed it right there. Cody Chevrolet is that blue one?
That's what I've got. I got 145.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. I went to the International page by mistake. My mistake. Yes.
That blue one right there, Dick, you got, that's the Cody up on the dump in front of you.
Okay.
That's for the cabin, cabin chassis. That's not, 77.5 was for the plow package.
So that's a, that's a total firm price, okay.
145?
Is the truck?
523?
Yeah. Is the truck going to be blue or is it, is it blue? Not this white one?
No.
They'll, they'll all be blue. I, I couldn't find pictures of the blue one for all of the trucks.
Okay, I'm just. All good.
Okay. Is there a motion? Oh, not no motion yet, Mike?
Well, I, I just want to reiterate that, um, with whatever motion you're making is, you don't have my replacement schedule. And that was one of the stipulations you wanted on the use of the ARPA funds. So just want to be clear that if, if you make a motion on this, the money, some of that money's got to come from ARPA.
How much? Do you remember?
How much, Mike?
I don't have it in front of me.
Off the top of my head, it's.
Well, you, you, your list said you got 77,000.
Well, it's on here.
But I think you just said 71,000.
It would, I, I probably misspoke. It's whatever's on there now.
77,475.
That's what you're going to have for ARPA, 77,000?
No, that, that's what's in the vehicle highway reserve.
71, yeah.
Why would we want to zero that out?
I don't, I don't. That's what I'm saying. I think that if you were to look at that original concept of the ARPA money, that I think it was 115. So if you minus 115 from the 145.
145. Five, yeah, in round numbers.
It would leave that balance that would have to come out of the highway, um, reserve.
Thought it was on here.
You have it?
Yeah, he's got it. I think he's got it.
Do I?
I brought it with me.
I can't seem to find it.
Was that your ARPA one or is that the budget?
This is the ARPA one.
Yeah, it's at the, it's at the second page, I think.
Second page?
Or the red.
I looked at highway, but is it in here?
It says town mechanic.
Oh, town mechanic. I didn't look under that.
Hundred, I put 100.
Do you want, you need 100 of it?
What's, what's the other 115? Oh, 115 was for the something else.
Yes.
So it was, I put 100 in there, but that's, if you do 100, then you take the 43, whatever it was left out of that, highway carryover, doesn't complete the highway carryover, or highway carryover, I'm sorry, the highway reserve. And that would fund it. I don't know if you want me to do the math between.
No, I'm sorry.
You're saying 45, 524.
Yes, the difference.
Right.
For the 100,000 out of that truck, the remaining balance to come out of the highway reserve.
So what would you like to do, folks? If anything.
Yeah? Well, look at me. There, thank you, Joe.
We approve purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet Silverado 5500 MD for a total price, fully equipped, not to exceed $145,524, to be purchased from Cody Chevrolet. And that the cost of this purchase be borne both by the $100,000 that has been recommended, we utilize from ARPA funds along with $45,524 out of the highway reserve.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I'm not happy that we use another 100,000 of ARPA, but we got to have this truck, so.
If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I have one other thing on this. Is it possible we can get a complete inventory of the equipment for the highway department? Not, no, no big emergency.
That's what, next meeting, that, that replaces. That's what, next meeting, that, that replacement schedule has every vehicle, its age, its miles, hours, everything about it.
Everything? So we're going to be talking about that with Jeff on Friday, right?
Yes.
Is that firm?
Yes.
Okay, great. That is firm.
Yeah, he, he responded to me today, so that's firm.
And your recommendation, when they're going to be replaced, too, Michael, be on the...
Everything's on there. And how much per year, so at the bottom of every year, it'll have a number that we need to have to sustain ourselves over a 40-year period, basically.
Okay.
Send me a text as to what time you want me to turn off this on Friday.
I, I, and I did, I said it.
We talked on the phone?
I sent, I sent a message, it had the times for highway and the time for fire.
Okay, I didn't see it, yet. So if you've sent it, that's good, if you haven't.
I didn't.
Okay. Figured it out by tomorrow, I'll let you know.
Okay, okay, we're moving on. Global Montello Group, DBA, Jiffy Mart, second-class liquor license.
Just a point of order, I assume we're deferring the 8 o'clock item draft vehicle replacement schedule to our next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now on to Jiffy Mart.
I'll make a motion that we approve a second-class liquor license and tobacco license for Global Montello Group DBA, doing business as Jiffy Mart, number 454.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Appointment of Deputy Health Officer, Michael Jones, through your appointment.
I had that piece of paper earlier today.
Why do you catch it in both of those? Okay, got it.
Was that your recommendation, Mr. Health Officer?
We had a, um, select committee interviewed and vetted.
Okay.
The candidate.
Okay. So you're okay with that?
I, I asked for this, um, just because I know, I, I work every day with Mr. Lemey, so I can be, I can be there to learn his filing system and all the other things that, the nuances about that bullpen back there. So I'm, I asked for it, I'm okay with it, um, and I would accept that appointment.
No, you don't, you come back there to hide out, that's what you do.
I heard he has a very unique file system.
It is.
May take you a while.
It's called the piles system.
We can find it.
Jim knows where everything is.
He does, and he'll tell you what year it was and who, who was there, the date that they did it.
I'd suggest that you leave your vest in your office, so do not wear that vest back in his office.
It's contamination.
Wearing it all the time, Bob, I tell you. Okay, is there, is there, is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, we appoint, uh, Michael Jones to the position of Deputy Town Health Officer for a period of three years, starting on January 9th, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Managers report.
All right.
Probably covered most of it, haven't you, Mike?
Some of it. And this, the handout I passed out earlier, I tried to hopefully streamline this a little bit. So the budget, number one was the budget change, that's already been addressed. This is the sheet I'm talking about and there was some stuff behind it that was married along with the number 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 was blank and I wrote in there paving estimates, um, so I'll show, I'll share those with you. But the salt shed, number 2, salt shed, um, I talked to Pete Ruby today and he asked if we were going to be done using his, uh, salt shed because he wanted to raise the price, if we wanted to keep it. And I was able to negotiate that we get it for the same price for one more year. And, uh, he was okay with that. So that bleeds into the salt discussions I had about salt and sand sheds with, um, Morton Buildings Company and, uh, actually Bud Carpenter, I called him, he's in Florida. But I was kind of pleasantly surprised when I talked to Morton Buildings that the money that we currently have, and it's on that reserve sheet, it's like 256,000, I think, was in there for, uh, salt and sand shed that the town has, it's in your reserve, uh, that form I gave you with the reserve figures on it. And then the 300,000 from the, um, the grant, that we can build a salt and sand shed. It will probably only house half of our salt, um, but, because we can get a second, uh, delivery, for a little more than, a little bit more than what we, we have currently, which is much better than saying was going to be 800,000 dollars and there were some unknowns there. So, um, I know Mr. Spalding had brought up a concern about use of the ARPA funds, he really wants to make sure the salt and sand shed was there. I think there's now, looks like this could be very feasible, um, to be able to do this, um, with a metal building, with concrete walls and asphalt floor, um, and get out of this for less than that, way less, probably, not we say way less, but less than 800,000 dollars. And pretty much, um, when I come back to you, once I have some firmer figures on that ARPA worksheet, to put that in there, you'll see that at the bottom, there was, because I just did something the other day with it, there was like 276,000 dollars in there. So if we had to use 100 or something like that of that ARPA towards the salt and sand shed, if you chose to do that, it doesn't deplete 100% of the ARPA that you has, you know, that was left there and you get the salt and sand shed. So I'm still working on it and I'm trying to get some firm numbers, but it's like, nobody wants to give me anything firm. And they'd say, oh, the building's going to cost 100 and, you know, 82,000 dollars and then it's going to cost you approximately this and approximately that. Until we actually hire someone and we get a, a municipal project manager hired and they start through that process, then it's going to be just kind of spitballing. But I was really optimistic that they didn't say it's going to be 800,000 dollars.
Sure. Had they, had they ever built a salt and sand shed before?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, they have?
That's what they do.
Okay, I know they put up steel buildings, but I didn't know it was necessarily for salt.
On their website, they have all kinds of different designs of what they've built.
Oh, okay.
And it's different types, industrial, agricultural and stuff like that, but they've built salt and sand sheds.
Perfect.
And I did talk to Bud Carpenter, I owe him the specs to, um, so he can also help me and, um, work my way through this, so. But that was actually, I thought, some pretty good news. The feasibility study note I made on here, uh, in that packet, I, and I, I made some more corrections based on, I sent some stuff out today to you by email and I didn't finish going to the bottom of the page, so I've done that now. And that's, so Mark Brown came in at a previous, uh, select board meeting and asked about, could we do a feasibility study on the cap, former Castle and Village School? The, the municipal planning grant window is closed, um, so the, when I talked to Devin Neary from the Regional Planning Commission, his recommendation, because he couldn't, because I don't know whether any other grants out there that are going to give you the feasibility study that you're looking for. But the town could hire a consultant of, of, to do this. And this RFP that I wrote, which needs some massaging still, um, and full disclosure, I pirated it from somewhere else, I didn't create this. So all that wonderful GWIS stuff in there, um, somebody else thought of and I just retooled it a little bit. That if, if we go out for the feasibility study, all it is is a request for a proposal. So we get it back, the board says yea, nay, it's not going to hurt me to put it out there. But we, we missed the opportunity for the grant, so without waiting another year, if the board wanted to do that, once you get the RFPs back and that some money, the money fits in, you want to do it, you let me know and we move forward and, um, they do a feasibility study on, um, whether we keep the building, whether it's feasible to keep it, sell it, programming, all, there's all kinds of stuff that they'll do in here. And that, uh, RFP outlines that, so I'd ask you if, in your spare time, um, to read that over and let me know by, maybe by next meeting, um, if there's anything that you find that's like in left field, and I can work on correcting it and, um, getting you a, a fresh copy that you can make a decision on whether you want me to send that out or not.
I have a question. When Mark came in and said that, weren't we in the right time zone? Because we voted to have you check this feasibility schedule and now you're saying we missed the window?
Yeah, I'd have to look at what the window was, when I just talked, when I talked to Devin Neary and I asked him if the municipal planning grant was a good option for this, he just said that the window's passed, so I don't know what exactly the window was. So I can tell you when, in an email I can send out to you.
I thought it was a short time that you had to do it right away or something.
It was like December 31st or something like that.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look, I don't recall, but I, well, needless to say, I missed the window if that's the case.
Well, you're going in front of the firing squad then.
It's all right, I can, some days it's preferable. So, but, so that's, I'll, I'll come back to you, I can get your feedback on that feasibility study in the next, you know, week and a half or so. I'd like to be able to clean it up and bring it back to you, uh, at the next meeting.
And I'd be interested in knowing, uh, what Devin or anyone else thinks a feasibility study costs.
Okay. All right.
Anything else, Mike?
I just had to make a note on this, um, my sheet. Okay. And I'll let you know, Mary Lee, too, when that closed, um, I guess it's probably a moot point, I didn't make the, the deadline on it, but... Then the next item on there and in your packet was the copy of the articles, um, that, this is, this is a draft right now of the, um, one for this year, but, um, it says prior year's balance, and I, I, I bring this up to the select board each year, that, that's in there and the Secretary of State's Office, um, has provided their opinion on this a couple of different times and said that anything that can go on the ballot that can possibly sway a voter's decision should not be on the ballot. So I just want to bring it to your attention. And I, I talked to, to Melanie and she said, and this is before I started working here, but, they used to put on there less anticipated revenue on those ballot articles that, with the revenue like transfer station or the beach or the wreck and stuff, um, that's what they used to put on there. And then somewhere along the line, it was, it was put on there and questioned back in 2018 and then again a couple of years later. So I just want to bring it to your attention, um, before we send this, is that something you got, the board wants to keep on there? Whether or not, I'm not sure what would happen if it was challenged, um, if someone said that, that, that's actually could influence somebody's vote and they, and they say, if, I guess if they want to fight it in court and they said, they found this invalid or not, or in violation of, does that mean?
The whole thing's fine?
Does it mean that they have to revote? I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't want to put doom and gloom into it, so, um, but I don't know the answer to that. But, um, I do know that, all I can tell you is what the Secretary of State's Office has said.
Am I, am I listening to you right, that they're saying it should not have that prior year?
It, anything that they could, that could influence a decision by the voter and, and that, we asked about this in prior years and they said that right there could be, could, uh, I guess, determined that it could influence somebody's decision. If I'm going to say, I'm going to vote for everything, if it went up, I'm just going to vote against it. So.
They do that anyways, Mike.
Yeah, that's probably true, for some people.
Mr. Chairman?
Go.
As I recall, uh, we, in the last few years, have been producing a separate document at town meeting that includes the, uh, revenue that we took in for each of these budget accounts. I would prefer, um, not to include this if it's against the Secretary of State's recommendation, but to include the phrase, uh, less anticipated revenue or whatever that is. And then perhaps add to that supplemental sheet, the, the current year, the prior year, and the current year's anticipated revenue. So kind of pull that parenthetical phrase out of the ballot, per se.
But have it available.
But have it available.
I would be inclined to support that.
I would too.
That makes three of you.
So it don't matter what I care, right?
You and I.
I like it there.
Unless you want to be, you like it there.
I do, I do, just, I, I just do.
Well, I, I think having it available is important, but we don't, I don't want, I don't think we should take the risk of jeopardizing the whole budget vote.
What happened to open and transparency?
Well, it's on the website for one, so we are being transparent, they can find all this information. But as Mr. Mark said, I can just add it all to that, um, that supplemental worksheet that shows everything, past years, prior years, um, the revenues, uh, all the revenue stuff. So when they come in to post it on the website, bring it to the, uh, town meeting, so everybody has access to it.
And, and be available to walk-ins at the town office?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because it'll be on our server.
An awful lot of people won't be on the website and won't be in the town office to look at it. They won't know until they get to the ballot box.
You, didn't you say you're going to have it at town meeting, too?
Yeah, we, we bring, like last year, um, Mr. Mark had asked for the, the revenues and stuff, so there, on the handouts that are out there, copies of the, of this article there, copies of the supplemental with all that data on there and we'll post it on our website, I'll post a link to it on Front Porch Forum. I mean, I'll do what I can to get out the word by social media, like, if you're really interested, here's where you find the information.
Awful lot of the people don't see that until they go to vote. When they go to vote, they, they then look at the numbers.
That's kind of their problem, isn't it?
No, it's our problem.
It's the whole town's problem.
The whole town's problem.
If it's available and people don't bother to look at it.
So we would say, Article, Article 2, to appropriate the sum of 28,406 dollars. And you go into the ballot box and the vast majority of people don't know what it was, if there's an increase or a decrease.
That's the problem that I have with it.
That's your problem, Bob?
It is.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not by myself this time, Bob.
I, I personally like it there. I, I understand what you're saying.
I understand.
It's not, it doesn't say it's illegal, it does not say that.
It says that we could be challenged.
You could be challenged on anything, Mary Lee.
Secretary of State says no.
There's nothing on here that we can't be challenged on, nothing.
Exactly right, Bob.
I'm just, I'm just, I like it there. How many years have we had it, Mike, four, five, six years like this?
It was in 2018 when I got here, it was a que, that's the first year that was questioned. So at least somewhere before that it was changed, I don't know when, but at least from 2018 to now it was there and I've asked the select boards usually year to year, um, because it's going to come up again, I know, I'm going to get a, Nedra's going to get a call and then she's going to come to me and then we're going to call the Secretary of State's Office again and go through the same, to be able to answer their question.
Has the Secretary of State's Office actually given us a straight answer? Or do they just give that ambiguous answer of anything that could be, potentially influenced, the voter shouldn't be there?
That's the, that's the canned answer and that, when this was asked, could this, this here, their answer is, anything that's put on the ballot that could influence a vote, um...
So they don't have them giving us a definite yes or no?
To that, to the, no, not a, just that, that right there could influence a vote.
Well, I, I, I've offered my thoughts on this, but I'm prepared to support, uh, Mr. Lemey and Mr. Spalding and...
Really?
Continue to include it.
I didn't say anything, Joe, he said it.
No, you did say something.
I, I, I like it there.
I do too.
It just gives it to taxpayer and I knew where we're at.
Somebody wants to challenge it, let them challenge it. All we're doing is providing accurate information to people.
Ask our citizens, they, they'd say they prefer to see it here.
So what do our citizens think? Both of you.
My only concern would be with the legality on it, that would be the only thing. I mean, I'd like to see that it's gone up, but do we want to have to spend any town money to hire a lawyer to argue it or...
If somebody challenges it.
If somebody challenged it.
Might it be somebody challenged who has a vested interest in something in the, in the budget? You don't have to, I'm not looking for names.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, I don't know anybody that's, got an axe to grind on it, that...
Yep. Okay.
I mean, the only other, the only other thing I can say is, how many people vote no every time they see an increase in something just for the sake of voting no every time they see an increase regardless of whether it should have gone up or not?
That's their option.
Yeah, I mean, we know everything's got to increase.
It's part of democracy.
Everything's increased, but...
Okay.
There's always going to be a certain percentage of voters that are not going to educate themselves and a certain percentage that will. And that's just that.
Seems like we now have three people who would like to keep it on the warning.
I know, I'm one of the three or one of the two or whatever. I'm not emotionally attached either way, I just don't want to see us in court and the odds of that are pretty slim, probably.
Am I to ask that one person, one single person can challenge it?
Yeah, they can. Yes, they can. Yep.
Doesn't have to be a group or anything, it's just one, one single person.
Could be.
If you guys want to take a chance, go for it.
Well, we've been doing it this way for at least.
I hate that remark. We've always done it that way.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying we have been doing it for quite some time.
Yep.
Without any issues.
But I do hopefully continue to provide the revenue that each of these accounts generates.
That's very important.
I can still keep it all, what you mentioned in there, too. I mean, it's not much added.
And that used to be on the ballot, I remember that. I could always say, "Less anticipated revenue." Yeah.
Fine. Okay. Is that, is that a consensus?
Are you voting on it or not?
I think it's a consensus.
Consensus? Consensus is it stays on there, Mike.
You all finished, Mike?
The last thing I was on my list there was. These are quotes that Jeff got back after riding around with Tim Rice from Wilt Paving. I don't, he doesn't have the one from the other company at this point, but at least I don't have it. But this is just to ca, give you a sense of the cost of, of resurfacing. On this list, the ones I had him look at was East Hubbard Road, Blissville Road, and West Creek Road. They're all Class II highways, state highways. We get money from, we can apply for grants for Class II paving help, but we usually get one, it goes on a three to five-year cycle. And the, in the past, it's been $200,000, and then we have to pay 20% of that. That'd be our share of it. So in this case, you can see East Hubbard Road, and that's basically from Eaton Hill East to the town line, Hubbard and Castle Town Line, which is $393,000. We put in our budget, 200, and this year's 239. East Hubbard Road's getting pretty bad in that area. If you drive there, you see them on a cracked ceiling that we've got, and then the shoulders are starting to sag and fall off, and Blissville Road, the same. Lots of, lots of cracked ceiling, and now we got a pothole that's formed out there, and that's like one of the only potholes on our, one of our, on our roads. We don't have a lot of potholes, we're really kind of fortunate on our roads. I'm not gonna tell you what Route 30 and Route 4A have, but. And then West, West, it's supposed to be West Castleton, from the state park towards the Fairhaven Town Line. We look at just, and Milling and Blissville, number two there, cold plating, the cost is forty, $40,000. And we're finding that we're having to do this on our roads because we built them up over the years so much that it's just layer on layer on layer of asphalt, and everybody's driveways are now farther and farther below that. And it's problematic for them. And matter of fact, this year I've got more complaints than ever after they paved on, on those aprons, because those roads that we didn't plane, have planed, their, their cars drag and stuff come out of their driveways, so they have to, they have to go and spend money to build their driveways up. But you can just see the, the cost, and, and I'm not coming to you with any recommendations, I just wanted to show you kind of what we're looking at. So I won't belabor that one any longer. And, takes care of that. And then as far as the rest of my report, not sure if you've had a chance to look it over.
I appreciated the Flintstone comment particularly.
Oh, yes. There's some humor in it.
It was intended to be humorous, I'm sure.
Yes, and sometimes you just have to have a little bit of humor in things. One thing, one thing I do want to point out, and I'm on page number seven, in the middle, it says, "See equipment," and then the grater. I just don't want this to sneak up on you or, or catch you by surprises. So you know that we spent $37,000 to fix the grater. And it came back, and they started using it, and Heath checks the fluids, and it was down two quart, or two gallons of transmission fluid. So the, they had Milton representative come down and see if they could find out what was going wrong, or what was wrong with it, and their assessment was, they, they found a, a fuel injector leak, and they put a seal on that, but they could not find a transmission leak, and the guy said, "Run it." And, and then monitor it and see if it leaks, and then if it does, we're gonna have to call them back down to figure out. My hope is that there's nothing wrong, for one, but two, if there is something wrong, when they did their maintenance repairs, when they did that $37,000, when they opened that up, that they did something that maybe a hose wasn't tightened or something like that, but it's hard to get to. So I don't know where it's gonna lead us to. Hopefully, it's a nothing burger, but I want to at least let you know what was going on there.
How long is it gonna take for it to get down to gallons? A day, or a month, or a week, or?
They, they were grading with it, so I don't know exactly what that was. Maybe Jeff has.
Well, if they're monitoring it now, I'm sure they can have a yardstick sooner or later, and.
Well, that's what I told them to do. I told Evan, I said, "Just go out and run this damn thing, and see if, if you can see anything, and then check the fluid levels, and you know how long you ran it, you know how far you went, and we can kind of keep from there."
If it's losing a gallon an hour, or a gallon every hundred hours, it's two different animals.
Yeah.
Maybe it came back from Milton Cat down to, to, is that a possibility?
They said they checked the, the fluid levels, so. But Evan did find transmission fluid in the belly pan down there, but the guy that come down, who I found out retired within a day or two of coming down here, so he probably didn't want to tear it apart. But that's speculating.
Well, if they're, if they're keeping a close eye on it.
They are.
That's satisfactory.
Yep. I'm on page nine, at the bottom, fire station. We're still, God, this building is starting to eat our lunch with repairs. Now the hot water system needed to be fixed again. This is not the first time, and parts are, we're waiting on parts. And then I talked to Mickey, and he said, "Within a couple of weeks, you'll be in here to do the insulation and fix the ceiling where it, where it had the leak in the roof." And get this thing closed up. I'm on page 10 now, under C, Town Office. Mr. Coles built a frame with UV protectant, or protective glass, and it's hanging over the top of that Rutland County map that was hanging on the wall in the conference room over there, so that is now complete. Now I'm on, bouncing over to page 11, bottom, number eight, Emergency Management. They work up there, basically it's some sanding left of, of some, of some sheet rock and painting on that room, but if you turn to page 12 at the top, action needed. I'm asking the select board to consider purchasing the generator for up there. It's the only building we got left that doesn't have a generator, and it can be smaller than the one that, they said it could be smaller than the one that was at the town office, and that was 10, 11 grand, so. But I'll come back to you with some numbers and some recommendations on it, but that's just to let you know, it's the only building, and they do have the welder, and they do have that old ONON, but it can't be plugged into the, it's an, it's not an automatic transfer switch up there, it's a manual transfer switch. They can plug into the back of the 110 of the, of the ONON, but it won't run everything. And if they lose power up there, they lose heat and the doors. They gotta be opening those damn doors, and they have had a problem over the years with the, losing power and not being able to open the doors, but that, that's just a repercussion if it does happen, that those big bay doors, they'd have to use a piece of equipment, probably open them.
Question. As it stands now, if we have to implement their, activate the emergency operations center, do we have a way to have power to it?
Yes, that's through the ONON.
Alright.
It'll at least give us lights and run the outlets and stuff like that.
Okay.
And the, and the heat, and the, the circulator pump for the boiler. The hot water tank is a different story. The assistance of firefighter grant, they're like, at the end of this month is when they're gonna accept the applications. And I tried to explain it in here, but they, they did not ask for the air refill station, because the grant writer said their, their focus this year was on firefighter individual safety, and that the gear extractor, the washer, was a better fit. And they were afraid that if they asked for the air refill station, that they would just not include, take the whole grant, they would, you know, discount the whole thing. So they've asked for new gear for everybody and the extractor, so.
Question.
Yeah.
The air fill restation, air fill, air refill station that's there now is well over 20 years old. How long do you think it's gonna last, or do we know?
I asked Heath, and he said, "It's not, it's not so much how much, how long it'll last, is that it's getting harder to get parts for it." The, last time they needed parts for it, that was a, quite the ordeal to find it, so it's, and it's $75,000 to $90,000 to replace that compressor in that system. So they could apply for another grant next year and try it that way, but if anything goes wrong with that system, it, it's not, it can't come out of their operating budget. They don't have 90, $75,000 to $90,000. But I don't have an answer. I, when I talked to Heath about it, I don't, he's on, he's still, he's on there, I think. If he has any input to that, but how long it might last, that's.
Does every fire department have one of these refill stations?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Can we share?
We can. We've done that before, when that was down. Polten, they brought them to Polten. There is a cascade system on the van that's also for refilling bottles as well. So if, if they had to go refill bottles, they have a place to go do that. I flipped to 13, page 13. I, I spoke to Jim and Dick about meeting with the, this is where it is, Jim, or I mean, I'm sorry, Jim, Dick, meeting with the, the fire department truck, not the truck, maybe, but Heath, and the highway department foreman and the mechanic to discuss those vehicle replacement plans this Friday. So we can hash stuff out, and so the, the goal would be to come back to this full board with a recommendation on the vehicle replacement plans thereafter. On page 14, the ARPA, on miscellaneous streetscape, that's the, the grant that the town received for bike and pedestrian grant for, for Main Street, the village. That's, that has not started yet. We have to hire a municipal project manager for that, and so that's a, something that still has to be done. And on your worksheet, on the ARPA worksheet, there's money I asked to cons, the board to consider for $75,000. There's, the, the project from South Street, on South Street, from the university to Main Street, that's a small-scale bike and ped grant, and that's a 50% match, and the board had accepted that back in November, I believe it was. I went back and looked at the minutes of that, and so that's gonna take, that's gonna require 75,000 dollars from the, from the town. And that does not include engineering. But the good news maybe is that the town's already had that engineered previously, so it may not take much to rejuvenate that one. But that's 75 grand for that project. Salt and Sand shed, we talked about. The problem trees, so the highway foreman applied for a, a grant for, the 50% match grant for dead, removing dead, dying nuisance or hazardous trees from our road sides. I, the application, I increased it to 14,000 out of the 20,000. Again, this is, we don't have, when it comes back, if we get approved for it, you have to decide whether to accept it or not. That gives me time to still work on where to get the funds from. It's on the very back, on the last page, I put on there, "Ask the select board to consider using additional monies into town lands," that's one option. It just seems that $14,000 and one, putting it into one year, because this project has to be done before, in sometime in 2025. To put $14,000 just into town lands, for those that do vote just on things that go up, that'd be a one that they'd probably say a big fat no on. But as I've told the board in the past, we're struggling with these dead or dying trees all around our roads. And there's some things that we can handle internally, and there's things that they can't. And this is, this is for the things that they can't. To include ash trees for the emerald ash borer, and pencil mills got quite a few of them up that way, and that are right on the side of the road. Or beside the road. So the other thing, originally I put, for, I asked for, I had $26,000 on my dry erase board for use of the ARPA funds for trees. That since went away, but I didn't include it on that worksheet, but I might come back if we can't figure a way out, is consider 14,000 to get these trees taken care of.
So where do you draw the line? Is it any dead or dying tree that's in our right-of-way our problem? Or at what point does it become the landowner's problem?
Depends, and that's, that's always a tricky one that we deal with.
I hate that answer.
If it's hanging over the road, threatening traffic, and it's in the right-of-way, it's, it's supposed to be the landowner's tree, but it just never works out that way. And they don't have any money to do anything with it, and then we've got branches that fall off or fall on power lines, and if it's near power lines, we won't take it down. But Green Mountain Power has shifted back and forth on their philosophy, and their philosophy now is wait till it falls on the thing, and it's cheaper to fix it and deal with it than go out and hire a tree company to go up and down all their power lines. So, anyway, but the stuff that's like the ash trees and stuff like that, that's, that, that, some of this falls into that local hazard mitigation plan and news, I forget what it's called, nuisance veget, nuisance vegetation, or, or something like that. I looked at it, I read through, there's two different places in there. So it does support that, but it's always, try, to try to find the money. But we'll figure out if we get the grant or not, and I'll come back to the board with it at that point. And that's very long-winded, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, but I haven't just.
Apology noted.
Okay. Not accepted, just noted.
Accepted.
Okay.
I have a question for the manager. Is he ready, Mr. Chairman?
Dick.
I have a question for the manager before you leave the manager's report. We're anticipating a budget surplus of approximately $234,000 after audit?
Correct.
What, if any, plans are you planning on recommending we do with that?
Well, one of them was the Salt and Sand Shed. I think I had mentioned in that, maybe in the report, was asking the voters in March to use 100,000 of that toward the Salt and Sand Shed.
That'll have to be on the warning, because this is actually just last year's warning.
New stuff, yeah, it's, BS.
Because I noticed some of the articles are from last year in here.
There's a couple of articles that need to, that are gonna go on there. The Ethan Allen thing, that, I had a meeting the other night about that, and.
So at what point do we have to make a decision whether we want to ask the voters to use some of the surplus for specific things? Like say a sand shed, or a salt shed.
It's probably, unless you do it tonight, I think you're, I think the 19th or, was Karen, I can't remember her date, 17th or 19th was her date that she needed stuff by of January, so I don't think our next meeting is before that, 8th, 25th, I think.
Yeah.
I'm bringing it up because if we do nothing, then that just reduces the amount of revenue we have to raise. Correct?
Correct.
Which would pretty much offset the one-time funds increase, if you know, I may not be saying this right, but I think you understand what I'm saying. The budget increase that was due to the one-time funds would, this would pretty well offset that. I'm not opposed to you to allocating some to the Salt and Sand Shed, but when do you think you would build the Salt and Sand Shed? Would it be in the next year?
It probably wouldn't be until the summer of 2025. By the time we get through the, this, the process. By the time we get through the process and permitting and the design and all that stuff, if they start breaking ground and moving earth around, it might be this year, but the total project being completed wouldn't be until 2025.
Well, I'd be inclined, due to the increase we anticipate we're going to have to raise by taxes to let this roll into that, and reduce the amount that has to be raised by taxes. What do you guys think?
Sounds reasonable.
Knowing what's going on, I think that's...
Sound good to you, Jim?
Yeah.
Okay. Thought it would. So, what's...
Joe, Joe, you agree with that?
Yes, I agree.
Is that it, Mike?
Oh, okay, here's the purchase order.
Okay. Purchase orders? Dick, I guess we have some. Is this the one? No, you've got two or three there. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve purchase order 051395 to Avenue for monthly maintenance of electronic town records for $700. Is there a second?
I have no idea what you're talking about, so...
Neither do I.
I say, I don't even have, I don't have any...
I didn't have them in my packet either.
No.
No, it wasn't in any of the packets, it was, I found it in the...
Well, this isn't even original, so at this point in time, I think we should...
Okay, we can hold on to all of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
There. Now, all I've got to do is figure out where my agenda is.
Got it.
So, we can go on to warrants?
Yep.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number 0108R for $700. Warrant 1228 for $6,430.33. Warrant 0104 for $24,859.81. Warrant 0108 for $340,744.25. Warrant 1228P for $16,599.88. And zero, and warrant 0104P for $16,683.38.
A second, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have two other warrants, I believe.
I would move that we approve warrant number 1229P for $631.91. And warrant 0105P for $613.30.
Second?
Second.
Had a second, any discussion?
I recuse myself.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Dick recuses himself.
That $700 thing you have there is on here.
Huh?
That's the first thing, that thing you had.
That's, there was on a warrant.
Yeah, it's on a warrant.
Hold this one?
It's the first thing, yeah.
Okay. So, we're okay, I guess?
I think so.
Usually warrant, usually purchase orders under 2K or within the town manager's purview anyway.
I was thinking that, yeah.
Select board comments or concerns?
Are we discussing the cover of the town and who we're dedicating to the town report?
We better.
It's getting closer.
Yeah, it is.
I know Karen did talk to the health center, and they do have a photo with their employees out front, so if you choose to go that route, they already have it. Let's do that.
Yeah?
Yes.
Let's do that.
What is it?
You want to do that?
What is it?
Just say yes.
Just say yes, Jim.
Sounds good.
You know, what we discussed last meeting about having a photo of the medical center on the cover?
Very nice.
The staff?
No problem.
Apparently, they've already got a picture of the people. The other thing was the dedication.
Okay. What about the dedication?
Well, I think that we were leaning towards two dedicates, Greg Bruno and Anare Fleming. And I'm good with that as long as Ron Powers is happy to have Anare recognized in that way.
I would agree that we should ask him. I know there was some concern about it falling outside of the last fiscal year, but I don't think that's relevant.
I don't think it is either, and last year we honored Gilmore's, which also fell outside of the fiscal year.
Okay.
I think it's what's on people's minds. If you wait a year, people's minds will be elsewhere.
Is that the consensus of the board? Anybody disagree? I guess not.
The only thing I would add is just, we should check with Lynn Bruno, too.
With what?
Check with Lynn Bruno, too. I know you're going to check with Ron Powers.
Yeah.
Just check with Lynn, make sure it's okay with her.
You want to do, you want me to do it, Mike?
Can you, I don't really know her.
Can you check with Lynn?
Sure, we go.
See if it's okay with her. Yeah, I think that's a wise precaution for both of them.
Yeah. Okay.
What are you holding up?
You must have gotten one. Joe wrote that.
Oh, yes. I don't think I have it with me. There was a mistake on this.
What is it?
It's the...
Oh, I haven't looked at the latest revision.
Yes.
I saw the email today, but I didn't have time to look at it.
We need to talk about this, the select board statement in the town report. There's a mistake on it, unless I don't read it right. So, yes, we need to talk about it.
Talk about it, then.
Okay.
Just because I keep it, doesn't mean you can't talk about it.
On the second page, and maybe other things, but on the second page, it says, "When the way the CVS budget..." Is that, am I not reading that right?
No.
Something's not right there, Joe. "When the way the CVS budget..."
Well, it may not be written as well as it should be, but I think it's clear, "When the way the CVS budget was presented to the voters last year as opposed to this year," and the use of one-time money are taken into account, the actual total differences between what it took to run the town last year and what the select board is asking the citizens to allocate for next year is $233,582 for 5.83%. And I confess that I'm not proud of that writing, so...
No, I just, I just didn't really...
If anyone has a suggestion for how to improve it...
I will commit to you, Joe, that I will take the time to look at, you sent us a new draft today, correct?
Yeah.
I will take the time to look at it tonight or tomorrow morning and provide you feedback. I just didn't have the time. Did you send that as a Word document?
I sent it as a PDM.
Okay. Then I'll send you a message as I look at it.
I printed it this afternoon.
There you go. I don't have the capabilities here, though. Anything else?
I just wanted to say that I thought the lighting at the intersection out here was better tonight, if you've made any adjustments in that, I thank you.
I asked them, but I'm not, they don't, they never really tell me when they do it, so...
They look better, I thought.
All right.
And the only other items were the cover and the dedication, so I'm done.
You're all set?
I'm good.
Nine o'clock, right on the dot.
Do we need executive sessions or anything?
I don't need it.
You don't need one? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.